Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Montgomery Township March 10th, 2025 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Welcome to everyone here tonight. We are going to start tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start off with some announcements here first. Candace, would you like to give your announcement first?
Yes. I just wanted to recognize that Darren Garrett began his career at Montgomery Township in 1997 as an on-call employee. Darren quickly moved into full-time laborer two position in July of 1998. In January of 2022, Darren was promoted to the crew tech two position. He worked in the Parks Department for his entire career. He ran the sixteen...
Sixteen feet?
Sixteen-foot wing mower in all the parks and township open spaces. He maintained and fixed all the equipment for the township. There wasn't anything Darren could not fix. He got his inspection license to assist with inspecting township cars and trucks. During his career, Darren also enthusiastically responded to the call for salting and snow plowing for countless winter storms. When he wasn't working for the township, Darren used to drag race a Studebaker pickup truck that he built. He still owns the truck today. And in his retirement, has ambitions of restoring the truck, turning it into a street rod. He also enjoys working in the garage, spending time at home with his wife and two dogs and working in his yard. We thank Darren for his dedication to the township. Darren and his mechanical abilities will be sorely missed in the Public Works Department. We wish Darren all the best for a happy and well-deserved retirement. So we need to thank him for everything, and guess what? If we have another snowstorm, he will be rolling over. He does not have to get out of bed to come and deal with it.
Although he could be on-call.
Thank you, Darren, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. And since I'm going to remind everyone, we are recording this meeting and it's being livestreamed on YouTube video, so in case Darren is watching, thank you so much. All right, as you may know, The Wall That Heals is coming to Montgomery Township, and we are honored to host The Wall That Heals. It is a three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial along with its mobile education center, and it will be here in the township from July 10th through the 13th. In order to make this event a success, we are seeking dedicated volunteers to help in various capacities. Shifts are scheduled for four hours, and training will be held on Wednesday, July 9th, at 6:00 p.m. For more details and to register to volunteer, visit M-O-N-T-T-W-P.org backslash The Wall That Heals. And for questions, you can email T-W-T-H@MontgomeryTWP.org or call the office 215-393-6900. Thank you for considering the chance to make a difference. Your time and support will help us honor our veterans and bring this meaningful experience to life for our entire community. One other announcement that occurred this weekend, I'd like to... International Women's Day, I'd like to recognize that. Montgomery Township recognizes International Women's Day, celebrated this past Saturday, March 8th, as a time to honor the contributions of women in our communities. We extend our appreciation to the dedicated women who serve our township, including all five female board supervisors, as well as the women in our community. Today and every day, we celebrate and support the achievements of women in our township and beyond. So all of you women out there, thank you.
You too.
Public comment. If there's anyone here wishing to make public comment during this meeting on any items not listed on the agenda, may do so at this time. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone, I'm Albert Gelson. My address is 406 Bonnie Lane. My remarks tonight will take just about three minutes of your time, and I really hope this doesn't have any negative impact on Darren's retirement. Thank you all for your service to the community and for allowing me to speak tonight. Seeing who's in the room, I just want to say thank you all for your service to the community. I've lived in a lot of places around the country, and I've had nothing but positive experiences with our police force and fire department and our EMS, so thank you. It's great to see everyone here. I'm here this evening to ask for your help in addressing an issue that is increasingly affecting the quality of life in our township and within my own family. Excessive noise from modified vehicle exhaust and engines of speeding cars, trucks, and motorcycles. Though it's something I experienced while traveling throughout the broader North Penn region, tonight I'm talking specifically about where we hear it all day long, which is on Line Street between 309 and Cow Path Road and on Lansdale Ave between 309 and Cow Path. I'm not naive. I realize that where we live inside the triangle of 309, Five Points, and the Cow Path Line Street intersection is going to bring with it a lot of vehicle noise. But this isn't the low hum of everyday cars or the occasional noisy truck. I'm talking about a fairly persistent roar of loud engines and likely illegal mufflers that echo for what seems like nearly half a mile in all directions, off every house and apartment in their path. Oftentimes, they'll make a repetitive noise that sounds like fireworks or gunshots, which you can only imagine the impact it has on pets and kids. Though it's incredibly frustrating for us individually, it's also important to recognize that these disturbances have broader implications for people's well-being. Studies have shown that prolonged exposure to high levels of traffic noise can negatively impact both physical and mental health. For example, research has highlighted that the detrimental effects of noise on children's development. In one study, kids exposed to high levels of road traffic noise experienced slower cognitive function, including attention span and working memory, two critical abilities for learning and problem solving. In another study conducted at PS98 in New York City, children who were sitting on the side of a school that was exposed to subway noise had reading scores that lagged three to four months behind another group of students who sat on the quieter side of the school. This demonstrates just how much of an impact the loud noise can impede cognitive development even in the classroom. And it doesn't end with just with children. Chronic exposure to noise has been linked to increased stress, sleep disturbances, and a general decline in overall quality of life in adults. Just this past Saturday, after I got home from visiting my dad in memory care up in Easton, I really needed a nap. Just as I dozed off, the worst repeat motorcycle offender came speeding down Line Street, jolting me awake. I could hear him seriously for 10 minutes as he turned right onto Cow Path and went deep into Hatfield. It happens all day on the weekends and during commuting hours on weekdays, a near constant stream of loud disruptions that make it difficult to enjoy being in the yard or sitting inside with the windows open. I am respectfully requesting assistance from the township and the police department to address this issue. Perhaps one potential solution could be targeted enforcement in the two areas that I mentioned, with patrol cars positioned during peak travel hours to catch the worst offenders. Issuing a few speeding tickets or disturbing the peace citations could provide some immediate relief while we work together on a more sustainable, long-term solution. By addressing these disturbances, we can improve the health and well-being of all Montgomery Township residents. Thank you so much for your time and attention to this important matter, and I look forward to doing anything I can to help. Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing this all to our attention. I'm sure we've all heard these racers around our neighborhoods and whatnot, so not sure what we can do about it to give you an answer tonight, but we will look into it. So thank you for bringing it to our attention. Appreciate it. All right, anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to item number four, the consent agenda. I'll bring a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following: the minutes of the February 24th, 2025 Board of Supervisors Meeting, and payment of bills for March 10th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
I do have one question.
Oh, sorry, yes.
On the list of invoices, and it was specifically the Parks and Recreation Fund, there was an invoice for Hois Landscaping for $9,350, and this was for salt and snow removal and sidewalks. It just kind of stood out as something that was somewhat unusual, especially given, you know, that we have our own Public Works Department, and I was just wondering if I could have an explanation on that particular invoice.
I can answer that. We've had third-party landscapers plowing our snow for the last four years. This year, the amount of ice we had to keep the parking lot safe, the steps safe, we used a lot of salt from both the township and the landscapers. So there was two or three episodes that did plow, but most of that, if you go to the detail of the invoice, is salt and the people to put it down for us.
Do we bid that work out? Or how is that? Because I just, I don't recall seeing that contract cut across.
The way the contract reads, and we've used the same company since the beginning, we entertained, we entertained... It's not a bid, it's we entertained different ways to do it. We're paying by the interest now and by the episode of ice storms, the amount of salt they use and the amount of personnel they use.
Thank you for that detail.
So if they're not used for anything during that season, we have a dry season, there's nothing?
Our invoice would say zero. There's, we're paying per episode, is the best way I can put it.
I mean, I see that the date corresponds with that, you know, the weather incident that we had in mid-February, so I understood that it was related to that snow event. I just, it stood out as something, you know, somewhat unusual.
If I could add one little comment to the fact that the liability of somebody falling in our parking lot would, is, it's the world we live in, so we are overly cautious when it comes to ice. We had a lot of ice this year.
And a lot of steps.
And a lot of steps.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate the caution.
Thank you.
Can I ask one other question? Just because I'm just more curious than anything. I saw that we have a line item for goose squad for $900, and I just was curious, does anyone know what that is for? Just curious, because I think...
I can answer that.
I'm just curious. I'm like, I know.
I can answer.
Are we, is it birdie?
I know, it probably could be birdie, but we have, since I've been here and previous to my tenure here, there is a gentleman that comes around virtually every morning, looks for geese in not only the community center area, but Greg can tell what other parks go into.
Yeah, he also visits the firehouses. He'll hit wherever there's a high concentration of geese, he'll go there, and his dog basically chases them out of those areas.
Okay. So this would be something that would be, is this like an annual fee, or is it a monthly fee? It was nine hundred dollars.
It's a monthly fee.
Monthly fee.
Monthly fee.
Okay, okay. It was one of those things, I was like, I didn't know we had a goose problem, but let's find out more about it. And I know geese can be extremely aggressive, especially during hatchlings. Yeah, you don't mess with them, so, although my dog probably still would. Yeah. All right, thank you for that explanation.
Then I'll call that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Non-opposed, motion passes. Recognition of First Responders, Montgomeryville Skilled Nursing Incident.
Good evening. On January 24th, 2025, the Fire Department responded to Montgomeryville's Skilled Nursing and Rehabilitation Center for a fire alarm activation for a broken sprinkler pipe. The broken pipe caused extensive damage, making the facility uninhabitable and necessitating the evacuation of all 144 patients. Public safety resources and private ambulance providers responded to the facility to assist the Fire Department of Montgomery Township and the Office of Emergency Management with evacuating and relocating this vulnerable population. In all, various public and private resources from southeastern Pennsylvania and the New Jersey EMS Task Force were utilized to transport patients to several facilities across southeastern region. This operation had several moving parts and took the team approximately 13 hours to evacuate the patients to suitable receiving facilities. A post-incinent critique was held on February 13th, 2025, with responding organizations to discuss the incident and recommendations for future responses to similar incidents. Tonight, we are recognizing various organizations that assisted us with this incident. This incident was an example of servant leadership at its finest. When I first got there, and it was, it was clear that this was going to be a longer-duration incident with a lot of vulnerable populations, all of our safety partners, all of our public safety partners responded. In this room, Ed Martin, who lives in town, answered his cellphone and said, "I'll be right over." Jake Frye, who's worked with the county, was texting me, asking me what I needed, and when I didn't respond, he just came from Flower Town. We had Brandon Bonjo from VMSC, who just showed up and went to work. It was unbelievable, the amount of work and skill and professionalism he exhibited. David Brown, who's the director, he's of EMS for the county, deputy director of EMS, he just showed up and started working. Everybody rolled their sleeves up and went to work. So we had a lot of resources that came to help us as far away as New Jersey EMS Task Force. Somebody told me how they got there, I have no idea how that mechanism works, but Jake Frye got that rolling, and the dispatchers made it happen. So in all, we had several agencies. VMSC committed over 20 personnel. New Jersey EMS Task Force, they committed over 16 personnel and several buses to help us out. So we wanted to take an opportunity to recognize all of them. And Bob Fowl from our zoning department, he came out at night, I called him, and he dropped everything he was doing to get over and help us, so there was a lot of moving parts and a lot of people that came and helped us when we were at our greatest need. And for me, it was amazing, because obviously, we were a little overwhelmed, and all of these people came and helped us and helped me, so I appreciate everybody's hard work and for showing up. So tonight, we're recognizing the Montgomery Township Department of Fire Services, the Fire Department of Montgomery Township, Montgomery Township Police Department, Montgomery Township Office of Planning and Zoning, Montgomery County Department of Public Safety, VMSC Emergency Medical Services, New Jersey EMS Task Force, Tower Direct from Tower Health, and the Southeastern Healthcare Coalition. The certificates read, "In recognition of your organization's outstanding performance during the Montgomeryville Skilled Nursing and Rehabilitation Center incident from January 24th to January 25th, 2025, in Montgomery Township, your exemplary efforts and swift actions resulted in the successful mitigation of a life-threatening situation, ensuring the safe relocation of 144 vulnerable patients from hazardous conditions. The Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors and the Office of Emergency Management extend their deepest gratitude for your unwavering commitment to public safety and your continued partnership with the residents, visitors, and business owners of Montgomery Township. Your dedication and professionalism during this critical incident made a significant difference. Thank you for your invaluable assistance during our time of need. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors recognize these organizations for their lifesaving actions at Montgomeryville Skilled Nursing and Rehabilitation Center on January 24th and 25th, 2025."
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate your language at the beginning there, servant leadership, that's something that we really need to embrace and continue with. And I appreciate all of you that were out there, first responders, or have a special place in my heart, and just, we're going to say thank you, we're going to make this motion, and then we'll continue from there. I'm going to make the motion to recognize the following organizations for their lifesaving actions at Montgomeryville Skilled Nursing and Rehabilitation Center on January 24th and 25th, 2025. Montgomery Township Department of Fire Services, Fire Department of Montgomery Township, Montgomery Township Police Department, Montgomery Township Office of Planning and Zoning, Montgomery County Department of Public Safety, VMSC Emergency Medical Services, New Jersey EMS Task Force, Tower Direct, Tower Health, and Southeastern Healthcare Coalition.
Second.
Sorry.
Second. She seconded.
She seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
So I would ask if Deputy Chief Ina Setti, Lieutenant Jerry Doherty, Director Brian McCallan, Lori, Deputy Chief Lori Dorzak, Frank in testimony, and Jason Drinkwater would come forward, please. We could do both? Okay. We don't need that.
Uh-oh, we're going to lose the room.
Three, two, one. You're not sick.
New Jersey. You're in New Jersey, right?
Yeah.
There she goes. Talk about mutual aid.
Thanks, everyone who's leaving.
Thank you. Continuing to serve. Never ends.
We're going to do some group shots out in the lobby, and I have one more thing I need to do before I can get out there, I'm sorry.
So we're going to move right into the swearing-in of the new FDMT Special Fire Police Officers, James Egbert and Ralph Wilhelm.
James Egbert and Ralph Wilhelm recently joined the Fire Department of Montgomery Township. James and Ralph are being nominated by the Fire Department of Montgomery Township to be appointed as Special Fire Police Officers under the Pennsylvania State Fire Police Statute. Under this law, before the applicants can perform the duties of Special Fire Police Officers, the nominated candidates must be confirmed by the Board of Supervisors and sworn in by the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors. Lieutenant Doherty, guy right next to me, of Montgomery Township Police Department, interviewed James and Ralph. Based on all the information, Lieutenant Doherty believes that both nominees have had the understanding and ability to perform their duties as Special Fire Police Officers in Montgomery Township. James and Ralph completed a 16-hour course in basic fire police training through the Bucks County Public Safety Training Center. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors appoint James and Ralph as Special Fire Police Officers effective March 10th, and welcome them to Montgomery Township.
I'm going to make the motion to appoint James Egbert and Ralph Wilhelm to the position of Special Fire Police Officer effective March 10th, 2025, and welcome James and Ralph to Montgomery Township.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah? Thank you.
Thank you so much. So you're going to read with me?
Aye, okay, good. Oh, okay.
Aye?
Aye. Ralph Wilhelm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And that I will enforce the laws of the Commonwealth?
And that I will enforce the laws of the Commonwealth?
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township?
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township?
And that I will discharge the duties of Special Fire Police Officer with fidelity?
And that I will discharge the duties of Fire Police Officer with fidelity?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay safe, Alfred.
Yes.
All right, we have James next. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, aye? Okay, aye?
Aye, James Egbert.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And that I will enforce the laws of the Commonwealth?
And that I will enforce the laws of the Commonwealth?
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township?
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township?
And that I will discharge the duties of Special Fire Police Officer with fidelity?
And that I will discharge the duties of Special Fire Police Officer with fidelity?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
We're going to get a group picture?
It's so nice. There's everybody.
No, no one wants to stay and keep us company?
I love the team Jimbo.
Yeah, they should have a team Jimbo shirt.
I love the team Jimbo.
Picture, that's adorable.
Yeah. This one's sweet, Stunters. Right? He's ours. It's so cool. So he must be also dad. I don't have any team Bob shirts.
Yeah.
For my dad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, get out. Everyone else is leaving. It's your chance to escape. Be pressed into service soon enough.
Oh, no, that's great.
Oh, yeah, please. You want me to take it so you can all get in? Yeah.
Good woman.
What a cute family.
For anybody who's watching at home, Candace is taking a photo of, of one of our, um, fire police with his family in front of our flat.
The Wilhelm family. They are adorable. All right, there's a price for the picture. You have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you so much. Thank you, Candace. Of course. All right, we're gonna go ahead and continue to move along as they make their way to the back. Item number seven is consider the award of contract for the administration building site lighting. Greg?
Thank you. The township received an open bid utilizing Penn bids on February 26th of 2025 here at the Township Building. Gilmore and Associates, a Township Engineer, reviewed the five bids ranging from $47,060 to $80,712.14 and is recommending to award the bid to Olson Services, the lowest responsible bidder with a bid of $47,060. The recommendation letter and bid tabulation sheets are included in your packet. The board rejected the previous bid of $77,200 at its public meeting on January 6th. A total of $65,000 was included in the 2024 capital investment plan for the replacement of the administration building site lighting. So our recommendation at this time would be to award the bid as recommended to Olson Services.
Do we have any past experience with Olson?
We do not.
Well, I love that we rejected it and we're saving $30,000.
Yeah.
Yay us.
And the other companies sharpen their pencils as well.
Yeah.
Well, and you receive five bids this time too. The last one you rejected. So you are on a roll with the bids for tonight. Um, we have saved on everything that we've budgeted for so far this year. Um, we've had a $73,000, almost $74,000 savings, which is 13% of the capital that's been approved so far.
Wonderful. We'll keep that up for the rest of the year. We'd be in great shape. All right, I'm gonna make the motion to award the contract for the administration building site lighting to Olson Services, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $47,060 per the recommendation of Gilmore and Associates Township Engineer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eight, request authorization to purchase replacement of 2025 Cam Superline trailer. Greg?
Thank you. In 2025, the Public Works Department is scheduled to replace a 2001 Eager Beaver trailer. The Public Works Department is proposing to purchase one 2025 Cam Superline trailer from Cargo Trailer Sales Incorporated as approved in the 2025 capital investment plan. The 2001 Eager Beaver trailer will be sold on munici bid following delivery of the new trailer. Attached is a quote dated January 17th of 2025 from Cargo Trailer Sales Incorporated, an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program, to provide the requested trailer at a total cost of $17,454. The equipment meets the specifications prepared by the department. A total of $20,000 was included in the 2025 capital investment plan for the purchase of the trailer. So it will be our recommendation at this time that the Board of Supervisors approves the purchase per the 2025 capital investment plan.
Any questions on this one? Okay, I'll make the motion to award the contract for the purchase of one 2025 Cam Superline trailer from Cargo Trailer Sales, Inc., an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of $17,454 per their quote dated January 17th, 2025.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's the Greg Show tonight, huh?
Yes.
Authorization to bid tennis court improvements at Spring Valley Park.
Included in the 2025 capital investment plan are improvements to the four tennis courts at Spring Valley Park. Gilmore and Associates, a Township Engineer, has prepared the required specifications and competitive bids will be solicited utilizing Penn bids. A total of $402,000 has been included in the 2025 capital investment plan for tennis court improvements at Spring Valley. So at this point, it's our recommendation that the Board of Supervisors approve the authorization to advertise the bid.
Can you just give us a little bit of information on what the improvements look like?
Sure. So they have to remove the fence, um, take that down. They're gonna do a stone dust overlay, so they put a layer of grit down, which acts almost as a plate, so it'll actually fill in the cracks. And it'll actually, um, as the blacktop moves a little bit with the freeze fall, that stone dust acts as a plate in between the two. And then they'll go over top of that with a new coating, a blacktop, then they get resurfaced and they get the lines painted on them. So the upper two courts will be painted for pickleball, the temporary ones, just like what they were previously.
There was the question. You knew it was coming.
It's coming.
Any other questions, ladies? Okay. All right, then I'm gonna go ahead and move to authorize the advertisement of the bid for the four tennis court improvements at Spring Valley Park utilizing Penn bid.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 11, request authorization to purchase replacement zero-turn mower.
Actually, number 10.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want me to do 11, next I can.
I'll read it from the screen. Authorization to replace Montgomery Elementary Pedestrian Bridge. It's still Greg.
Doesn't change the order of who it is. All right, thank you. Included in the 2025 capital investment plan is a replacement of the Montgomery Elementary Pedestrian Bridge. Gilmore and Associates, a Township Engineer, has prepared the required bid specifications and competitive bids will be solicited using Penn bids. A total of $336,000 has been included in the 2025 capital investment plan for the replacement of the Montgomery Elementary Pedestrian Bridge. So at this time, it would be our recommendation the Board of Supervisors approves the authorization for the advertisement of the bid.
And I'm gonna ask you the same question. A little bit of info on this one?
Yep, that's fine. Um, the pedestrian bridge right up here on the sidewalk, um, right there by Montgomery Elementary needs to be replaced. Um, we've done some repairs to it, but we're just, we're at that point where it's lived its useful life. So we, we have a couple add alternates in the bid specifications just to see where we come at price-wise as to what material is gonna be used. It will be a metal bridge or aluminum bridge, depending on where we come at, um, with prices.
Are there any improvements that are planned? You know, for safety purposes or?
The bridge.
Well, yeah.
Not, not being smart, but seriously, the bridge. Um, the sidewalk and everything else leading up to it, they're also gonna check the embutments underneath. Um, they're gonna make sure everything's satisfactory there too. It's safe and, um...
Yeah, all the walkers use it.
That's, yeah.
Walkers going to school.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, it's clearly needed. Uh, what I was wondering is if there were any enhancements that we were to be able to take advantage of with this replacement, like in terms of, you know, is there like a non-slip surface or anything, you know, in terms of the ramp? The grade of the, the ramp, anything? You know, is there? I don't know.
It's, it's gonna meet the specifications that we needed to. I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, well, I, I was just, I was just curious to know more about the, the bridge design and, you know, if there were any enhancements that were gonna come with this replacement. Thanks, Greg.
Sure.
Do we have an anticipated timing that we're asking of the bidders?
For the bid opening or do you mean for the project? The actual project, we're hoping to have it done before the start of school. That might be a stretch on that, depending on when it actually gets awarded. They said it would be anywhere from like six to eight weeks for the build time on that. So they have to remove the old bridge and then they have to be able to put that one in. So if it does go into the school season, it should be towards the very beginning of the year for the school season to start. So I'm gonna, I'm hoping to be done before school, but we're looking probably beginning of September.
Any other questions? I'll make the motion to authorize the advertisement of the bid for the replacement of the Montgomery Elementary Pedestrian Bridge utilizing Penn bid.
Second.
Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Cares? All right, now we go to number 11 and the zero-turn mower.
Okay, um, in 2025, the Public Works Department is scheduled to replace a 2019 X-Mark 72 Laser-Z Zero-Turn Mower. Um, staff is proposing to purchase one Toro Z Master 7500 Zero-Turn Mower as approved in the 2025 capital investment plan. The 2019 X-Mark Zero-Turn Mower will be sold at munici bid following a delivery of the new mower. Attached is a quote dated February 13th of 2025 from Turf Equipment and Supply, an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Purchasing Program, to provide the requested equipment at a total cost of $27,982.36. As of the time of the price, the guarantee barring any unforeseen delays in availability, the equipment meets the specifications prepared by the department. A total of $30,000 was included in the 2025 capital investment plan to purchase this zero-turn mower. So our recommendation for the Board of Supervisors would be to approve the purchase of the 2025 purchase in the 2025 capital investment plan.
Questions? So the current one that we're getting rid of is about six years old or so? How many hours on that now?
That has just short of 2,000 hours on it. The computer started giving us problems last year. So that's one of the reasons why it got bumped up. The computer on those, you're probably gonna be around the $1,500 mark just for the computer.
And do we think delivery of the new one will be here in time for the spring mowing season then? Is that?
I'm hoping. Should be, yes.
All right. And no other questions? I'm gonna motion to approve the purchase of one Toro Z Master 7500 Series Model 72076 Zero-Turn Mower from Turf Equipment and Supply Company, an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of $27,982.36 per their quote dated February 13th, 2025.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right, and number 12, approve the spring/summer 2025 recreation programs and fee schedule. Floyd?
Thank you. The weather today kinda leads into what I'm gonna talk about. Before you propose, is a proposed lineup of activities at the Montgomery Township Community Recreation Center for Spring/Summer 2025. The recommended fees and charges for, for each program event are included for your review. The schedule will be valid from April 1st this year through August 31st, 2025. All CRC activities and events will be publicized through our normal promotion avenues as well as social media. The line, the, the roster of recreation opportunities provides a diverse menu of positive activities. A wide array of healthy fitness sessions, fun community, special events, and unique educational programs will be offered to individuals, households of all ages and abilities. Our goal is to provide a all-inclusive facility for the Montgomery Township community to enjoy. Previous board action was approval of fees and charges for each quarter of the seasonal program. We only do three of these, which, and this is spring and summer together. Budget impact is the opportunities are expected to be budget-neutral. Uh, staff's recommendation is to approve the 2025 Spring/Summer Recreation Program and Fees Amendment as submitted. If there are any questions, um, I'd be happy to answer any of the programs. We'll be doing all the things we've done from movies to craft fairs to Stars and Stripes Remembrance, summer concerts. Kids University will run once again this year. And, um, if there's anything else, you'd be happy to talk about.
Supervisor Bamford has a question.
So in the rate schedule, the, the column related to the fees, uh, it says cost per member and cost per non-member. Should that read cost for resident and non-resident?
Uh, it probably should, yes. In some cases... Yes, it should read that. My mistake.
So I would, I would, you know, make a motion to approve, uh, with that amendment that the rates reflect resident versus non-resident rates.
Thank you for catching that.
Then if you're making that motion, I will second Ms. Bamford's motion. No public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for catching that, Tom.
Item number 13, update on red light camera enforcement initiative. Lieutenant Dougherty?
Uh, good evening. Um, in 2024, the Montgomery Township Police Department began research into the implementation of an automated red light enforcement camera and cameras to improve traffic safety. Two intersections were identified for this new state-of-the-art automated red light enforcement technology. The two intersections are Route 202 Parkway and Horsham Road and Route 309 at North Wales Road. Starting March 14th of 2025, the system will go live. Montgomery Township Police Officer will review every alleged violation to ensure its validity. For the first 60 days, violators will receive a written warning for a violation. After this warning period, a viol, if a violation is confirmed, an officer, uh, by an officer, a civil citation will be sent to the vehicle's owner. The violation notice will have instructions on how to pay for the citation or request a hearing. Further, the violation notice received will have a section with instructions on how to view images of the vehicle and a video of the violation. The citations are civil in nature and do not affect a person's driving record, their insurance, or a CDL status. This week, the Montgomery Township Police Department will be releasing information on our social media websites explaining how the project works. This information will include how to handle any violation notices received through the mail or how to appeal. through the mail or how to appeal the violations. The Police Department is excited to introduce this new program and believes it will allow our officers to concentrate on other areas of enforcement and public safety while improving traffic safety for our residents and commuters.
Questions?
What exactly goes into the officer that's going to verify that it happened?
So the officers assigned is, I believe it's gonna be our highway safety officers, and they're going to review each and every violation. What they're looking for is that the vehicle is before the white stop line when the light goes red, that the vehicle then continues through the red signal. And then they're identifying the vehicle. So they're gonna confirm that it's an actual violation that's in line with what the vehicle code violation would be before they approve it for this now first civil violation.
Sounds good.
And just a reminder, when we submitted our request to PennDOT, they not only immediately endorsed these two intersections, but they chose five others that they believe will, would benefit because of crash history, because of violations. The number one complaint that I receive personally from residents has to do with speeding in the township. It used to be traffic, you know, but that's sort of been mitigated with the Parkway and, you know, and the number of people who are working remotely and the unfortunate circumstances with the malls decline, declining, you know, customers going there, but the speeding and the recklessness. I mean, working at this corner, you know, just since I've been here, you know, there's been one fatal motorcycle accident. There have been a number of accidents, and they are not because of sight distance. They're not because of glare. They're not because of curvature in the road or standing water. They're because of operator error.
Can I ask again? I was writing down the information about the location, even though I already knew it, and I missed the date.
So the, the the date of it going live is going to be March 14th. However, there is a 60-day
Right.
window.
Okay, and then when will signage go up to alert people to the pending, the upcoming?
So I actually ironically had questions from motorists as the camera systems are mounted up there. I've already had questions because the motorists are already seeing it as a deterrent component, which is part of it.
Right.
So there is signage that's either up there or going up there. It's up already on North Wales. Okay, so it's up already in both locations, warning motorists about this type of thing. So there's a deterrent component. Plus, you see this new apparatus that's right before the intersection, so that's a deterrent. And looking at some of the statistics that are in the packet that Chief Peoples gave me, what, what has been experienced by those agencies that have put these cameras in is they're also seeing an increase in compliance at other intersections around it because the awareness is, is very good.
Fantastic, excellent. And then the social media and awareness campaign will start?
Yeah, it's going out this week. We have through Crime Watch and our other social media components.
Okay, great. I'm sure we'll get questions, positive and negative on this, but I, I think we have the data to support it, and I think it's amazing. I look forward to having this here. As I've sat at those exact like traffic lights, watching people zoom through the red lights, I thought to myself, wow, this'll be nice to not see anymore.
Well, it's the same thing with the school bus lights. You know, we all thought, well, that's in your brain, or you stop for school buses. And then we started seeing the report come in over and over. Just how many, how many they're catching, and there's also reviewed. So it's not, you know, there is an opportunity for the human side to look at and make sure that it is actually a violation.
Right. And then we have video and actual image proof. It's kinda hard to.
Yeah, I think that's one of the important components because if, if you're notified as a registered owner of a vehicle, you're gonna have the links right there to watch the violation of your vehicle going through that. So kinda answers the question right away, and it's already been viewed by our officer before you're gonna receive it.
Right. And, and we should also clarify too that this is a a cost-neutral. There will be no cost to our township itself.
Correct.
Yeah. So I just want people to know that this is something that we are not gonna be, you know, taxpayer-funded.
That's correct.
Self-funding.
So if somebody wants to go as far as fighting this, the officer that reviews it, the video, the pictures, they'll all be evidence then?
That's correct, yes.
And they're all admissible as evidence then?
Exactly, yes.
Great.
So the parents that get this can look on there and see which of their kids did it.
Yep. You're giving hints.
Just saying.
The goal's to keep the motorists safe.
That's true.
Thank you.
And keep everyone else safe that's on the road as well, that's. Anything else? And I will move to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Happy birthday to our chair. We didn't actually, well, we forgot to mention that earlier, absent to enjoy her birthday.
Happy birthday, Audrey. She's out not watching this.
Alrighty.